A brief bit of time to thank the work that our teachers have been doing since this was essentially thrust upon them at the end of school on March 13th. I believe that because of some work that some of our teachers had been doing, most notably in the middle school with Canvas, our learning management system, they were probably a little bit ahead of the curve, or maybe a lot ahead of the curve than some of our teachers in our high school or elementary school. But I will have to say that it didn't take them very long to get up to speed. I would also state that even in an optimal face-to-face in-classroom learning environment, not every teacher is doing exactly the same thing at exactly the same time. So there are going to be, and we expect there will be, variations in instructional techniques that teachers use, prefer, that work best for the students that they know. So we're going to, I think, even in an optimal situation, see a normal variance among teachers in the way they deliver instruction. I don't think there's anything bad about that. In fact, I think that's fine and to be expected. I also want to say that in a very recent survey that I saw, and I believe I sent it along to our administrators of school districts in Duchess, Putnam, Westchester, and Rockland Counties, that the vast majority of teachers in those districts are providing asynchronous learning opportunities to their children. The percentage of synchronous learning, which means real-time, the teacher is delivering instruction live to students at home, is a relatively small percentage of those school districts. So I believe that we're, you know, we're never going to be all things to all people. But I believe that we're doing a very credible job across the board to provide learning opportunities to our children. We transitioned from providing a review and enrichment during the first week to providing new material in Week 2, and we've been doing that for the last several weeks. So I'm proud of our teachers. They're working hard. They're dealing with the same kinds of issues and frustrations related to the coronavirus that our parents are and that people across our state and across our nation are dealing with. And I hand it to them for the excellent job that they're doing. So that having been said, I guess I'd like to ask each of our building principals and then to Emily Davison, our Director of Special Education, to give the board and members of the public who are listening and watching this meeting as to what's going on in your buildings in terms of remote learning. So if we could start with Brett, I'd appreciate that. Brett, I still got power? No power?
No, they just got back like 20 minutes ago.
Good to hear. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to you Brett, and then we'll go around the horn.
So yeah, generally, it's been a positive experience. The teachers have gotten, you know, early on in the process, like Joe said, we had a couple of weeks where it was primarily, you know, review. So we're kind of in our third week, two days into our third week of relatively new materials. We started launching some of that. Big learning curve in some ways, and then for some other people, they were able to jump in no problem. But we gave a lot of flexibility, I think, across the three buildings to try to get people to work through things that they felt comfortable with and then work within their group or their grade, in my case, to kind of unpack some level of learning moving forward as far as, you know, these closings are concerned. So generally, the feedback's been good. Early on, there was some, you know, a lot of communication between teachers, parents. I was brought into the loop here and there when it came to just timing of getting materials out. And I think most grades have settled in and worked. It's not consistent across the grade because a lot of teachers are really working with what's best for their students and their parents. Early on in the process, we stuck to trying to have classroom teachers come up with about an hour and a half to two hours max of ELA and math work and try to unload it that way. So we're still working through that process. As far as the technologies, K-1, 2, 3, use Dojo as a great way of communicating with parents, kind of school messaging and portfolios. The upper grades have found Google Classroom a better way to do the same, serve the same purpose. We have a lot of teachers doing Zoom meetings, some once or twice a week. Some, I was talking to a teacher today in 4th grade that does one each morning. Other teachers who are working through other ways, like recorded videos, have YouTube channels to kind of get a lot of the reading and writing, some of the mini lessons put together, and then they'll upload on Dojo for parents to see it. So that's been a lot of the way that people are communicating back and forth. Teachers are, we were only in our second year of Big Ideas, so as far as math is concerned, we're utilizing as much as we can of that platform. There's a lot of, also iXL, which we started using early on, which was free and standards-based. So there's a lot of utilizing those two specific, you know, platforms. We are looking at some other ways for teachers to interact with their kids and students. But certainly, it's taken a lot to figure out what's worked. A lot of grades have actually surveyed their parents and they kind of tried to come up with a plan that worked for the majority. So for the most part, the feedback's been good. Like I said, some of the logistics working out, logistics of when materials come out. Some grades have split the subjects and worked that way. So one person does the five lessons for the week, and then they all kind of meet and give feedback and plan for the following week. So we're kind of in our second, into our third week of that. So overall, it's been a really positive experience, but a lot of new things. I think overall, it'll make us better when we get back, whenever that is. As far as communicating, a lot of people out of their comfort level and really trying new things. So it's been a good process so far.
All right, thank you Brett. Maybe Diane, we should go around the horn, and then if members of the board have any questions or would you rather do questions administrator by administrator?
Maybe administrator by administrator.
Okay, so Brett, you're still on deck here. You're up to play it actually. So anybody have questions for Brett?
Brett, you mentioned Big Ideas, which I know is math, but you also mentioned iXL. I'm not familiar with that, or I don't remember what that was. What is iXL?
iXL was just, it was actually something, one of the earlier, you know, as you know, when this started, a lot of tech-based companies that had that kind of platform offered free access. So iXL was one of them, and it's just basically, it's New York standards-based math work so students can practice, and it's not as obviously extensive as Big Ideas. But it's a good way for kids to practice and assign, you know, homework-type things and things like that. So people have been bouncing between the two platforms as we were still learning Big Ideas when we were only about a year and a half into that new program.
Thank you. Did you mention in the various ways that teachers are reaching their classrooms, I heard Google Classroom and Dojo and some recorded videos on YouTube. Did you also see Zoom at the end there? I was picking notes and I missed.
Well, no, on YouTube, a lot of them have their own YouTube channel. So they'll record their own video and then put the link on Dojo so parents can click on it and see what they're doing, you know, foundations, things like that. So it's not pulling videos off of YouTube. In most cases, it's them actually creating their own video.
Right, right.
And then you asked something else. I'm sorry, what was the second part?
Did you also mention Zoom? Were some of the teachers doing Zoom?
Yeah, quite a few actually, but varying uses. You know, some people using it for morning meetings on a daily basis. Some people having, you know, a meeting once a week with their students. Some students, I just got an alert that Doreen Jamperton's doing with her kindergarten class tomorrow. So it's kind of, you know, people are utilizing it as they see fit and comfortable. Not 100%. We have some staff that are doing, like I mentioned, would prefer to pre-record mini lessons. That way, some of them will like use the students' names, each one of the students' names in their lesson to kind of make it a little more interactive. But it's not live. It's recorded on their own each day. Some release five days. One of the teachers I was talking to today, she does all five days. Like first thing Monday morning, she takes care of most of it Saturday and Sunday night so that everyone has it. Because in a lot of cases, the teachers were doing that in the classroom anyway. They might have like a Monday to Friday syllabus, and then everything's due on Friday. So some of them have kept that going to the best of their capacity.
Thank you.
Thanks Brett. I wanted to thank you for everything that you're doing, and also thank you for joining. I heard you joined a second-grade Zoom class, which I think is fantastic. It's just wonderful to see those kids see each other and get excited again. I wanted to ask if there's anything that you're missing in your building or anything that you need extra support on, given that this may go on for another month or so?
Well, right now, I think, you know, the biggest thing, and we've started to kind of move forward with it, is some of the tech trainings. And like for me, myself, the thing that's the most foreign to me is Google Classroom. A lot of people in my building were using, you know, Google Docs and a lot of those offerings, but I wasn't using a lot of it. So just recently, we've, Steve has worked with Diane Linden-Brooker to create a few PDs that have really helped. So that's the big thing for me, and luckily, we've got it on board in the last, mid-week, last week into this week. We're still doing kind of like, once a week, it's turning out that I'm usually going back. Like this Thursday, I'll probably be there for a little while. 4th grade's getting Books Journey actually up and running with the help of Pat Sexton. So we're, I'll be there to try to get some materials together, get them to her. So as far as like hardcore, you know, hard materials like mailings and envelopes, we're all good when it comes to that. But we're kind of piecemealing, getting away from a lot of that. But as we've been kind of rolling stuff out, we've needed to. So again, for me, it's mostly some of the PD and just navigating some of these, you know, platforms like Google Classroom. It's helped that both my boys happen to be using it in Wappinghurst, so that's helped a little bit too. But that training that's come on board has been extremely helpful.
Any other questions? Mark?
Yeah, so Brett, and this applies to the other principals also, as they give their comments. But I'm just wondering if you're hearing any questions or concerns from parents about the way the material's being delivered or the platforms that are being used?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the two platforms I mentioned as far as just communication, people have been pretty happy with. I know for the most part, I have little kind of pockets in my building. Like 4th grade, for example, I have a couple of, there's a couple of families in 4th grade across the three teachers that have been asking for more like project-based work and things like that. And that's one of the reasons why they moved so forward so quickly with trying to make sure they can get Books Journey up and running because that was something they had, you know, really heard from parents they wanted. But for the most part, it's been really positive. Like I said, I think the biggest thing was more along the lines of expectations when materials would be released and when teachers could go with the flow. I mean, one of the big concerns back when we weren't sure about spring break was the fact that if we thought we were gonna have to take like a spring break like we normally would and kind of people offline for the most part, I think the big concern probably, I could probably speak for all three of us in three buildings, was that we were like a couple of, like three or four days into the teachers just finally getting into the groove of figuring out what worked for them or to start doing that. So, you know, there was some worry that we'd have like a 10-day hiatus on that and try to get back into it again. So that's been an advantage to it. But for the most part, very positive about the two platforms we're using to communicate. The good thing about Dojo is three-quarters of my, more than that of my staff are using it. Their students and families. So I just go on and ask to be invited as an administrator. They've all invited me, and so it's kind of nice. It actually allows me to peek in. So the ways they're organized seem to work pretty well. And it's not, luckily, we don't have 10 or 15 platforms going. We're trying to, seems like people are nailing it down to one or two.
Yeah, thanks Brett. And just to echo Steve's point, thanks again for participating in the Zoom with the second graders. I know they really got a kick out of it.
Yeah, I did it with fifth too. It was awesome. So different too, because like the fifth graders are all lounging and it's like a totally different thing, you know?
Yeah, no, for sure. They were excited.
Had a blast.
So thanks for taking the time to do that. I know it meant a lot. I mean, obviously, we're in a new environment here. But in terms of, you know, in terms of the teachers who are kind of hesitant at this point to try the Zoom method out, have they expressed specific concerns or is it just a comfort level? Or what kind of feedback are you getting from maybe the teachers who aren't ready to try that yet?
Yeah, I think it could be a little bit of both. I mean, early on, it was definitely, you know, definitely concerns about security, things like that. I think it's a bit of a mix. And, you know, while I can, I think everyone is really, I can commend everyone doing such a good job of stepping out of their comfort level. I think those levels of comfort vary from person to person. So, you know, we might get there. I think having not had a directive to do so or work through that platform also, we've really wanted to focus more on people's comfort levels and kind of attacking what makes them feel good about teaching and focus on that first, and maybe we'll grow, you know? The good thing here is even if it is another month or two, luckily, this isn't a permanent solution. So we will get back to kind of that face-to-face. But it's a good question, Matt. I think, I really genuinely think it's a combo of both. I did have a couple of teachers reach out to me early, very early on, saying, you know, this is something I have to get used to. Maybe I'll start with like small little snippets, things like that. And that's, that's why I said, I found out from one teacher, every single day she's doing one, but for like a morning meeting and that kind of thing, and it seems to work. It's also, it's a lot to manage, I think, and just figuring out, you know, kind of figuring out the workload and deciding what to offer parents and timeframes and things like that have kind of all come into play. Definitely a combo of both, I think it's fair to say.
Thanks for that. That's helpful.
Any other questions? Brett, I have a question. Do you think that we're starting to settle into finding a balance between maybe teachers are assigning like too much work? Like I've heard some parents feel like it's too much and they can't keep up with it, and then others feeling like it's not enough, you know, trying to figure out what the balance is there?
I think that's the major rub here. I really do. I think for the most part, like I said, we have some, a couple of parents that are like, hey, we'd love more. You know, what can we do? And, you know, along the lines of academics and things. But I think the balance is the toughest part. For the most part, I do have, like I said, I have that kind of one pocket of parents in one grade that, you know, are just actively communicating with their teachers and requesting more and trying to work with them. That's about the only grade that's come to me saying, hey, you know, hey, are we allowed to even do that? Can, you know, you kind of told us an hour and a half to two hours, knowing that specialist teachers and AIS and service providers are also taking a chunk of time. I think some of the conversations back, Diane, like early in the process, about, you know, some people really reaching out to their teachers and myself about, you know, hey, could we get a couple of days in advance? Is it all right for us to be a day behind? Like all that kind of stuff. We've tried to be as flexible as possible. So I think that really is the rub, the balance between it. If you're gonna add more work, what might it be? And to some point, I think the big variable here is the understanding that the vast majority of families are working, you know, whatever their profession is remotely, while at the same time, you know, trying to, trying to kind of, you know, do a lot of the hands-on work with their kids for us at home. It's tough. And it's interesting, I mean, you know, myself and my wife are both educators. We got two boys, nine and 10. They're pretty self-reliant when we get them rolling. And there's still a lot of kind of hands-on and keeping them moving and finding the right time to do things. So that's been the tough. If you were gonna add on, or even for some of the people with Zoom, they found it hard. They feel like when they do do it, there's always a significant percentage of their class left out for various reasons. We're hoping the tech isn't the reason, because Steve's been doing a great job trying to get all that out. But I think you don't always get everyone, so there's kind of that equity issue, that concern. But I think they're getting there. I think, you know, sometimes I have teachers calling me, being like, you know, emailing me, be like, can I just call you on the phone and let's talk out of a couple of things? It's easier than email, and of course, and then things like that. But that seems to be a lot of the questions from the staff as far as what they can do, what they're comfortable doing, and the feedback they're getting from teachers. So we'll get there. But for the most part, like I said earlier, we're really getting a good response. I'm amazed at how many positive emails I get from parents, like, listen, I know this isn't easy and, you know, just thanks for everything you're doing. And I have to give my staff credit. It's me, John, and Ed talking earlier. It's amazing. It's really phenomenal what they're able to put together so quickly.
I'm glad you're hearing from parents in a positive way. That's good. How do you feel that the communication is going? Do you communicate with the chancellor parents on a regular basis, or is it mostly just through the teachers?
It's a little bit of both. I don't have, it's interesting. I'm trying to, you know, talk about a balance, trying to find the best way to, you know, I've played with every idea of doing a morning meeting, you know, a morning announcement and an affirmation like we do every day. To what I've been doing now is I'll kind of, you know, post like videos on Dojo and things like that or send a few things out via school messenger just to kind of tell people that they're doing a great job and, you know, keeping it up. But I'm kind of communicating that way is the best way. But I don't have anything regular, like a principal challenge. And a lot of times when I sit down and start thinking about those things, so it's a lot more individual interaction, classroom interaction, grade-level interaction. But when I start thinking about those things, I do start to kind of go back to, wow, is that gonna be a lot for them to do? Is that gonna be too much? Is that, you know, are they gonna feel obligated to, you know, to do it? I have to say, you know, the specialist team, Kevin Urnell, kind of got his, some of his producing chops back when we got that $25,000 grant. So he's been kind of putting some stuff together, working on a pie face thing that the kids earned for the heart, the jump pro for heart. So I'm doing a lot of that kind of stuff, and just a lot of people are reaching out, finding opportunities, so.
Thank you.
I find myself in a very support role as far as trying to get back to staff as quickly as possible and reconnecting dots for people and things like that has been the way I've been able to, I think, help the most.
So Diane, can we move on to John Knitser?
I think so.
John, you're up.
All right, good evening, everyone. So I don't want to repeat things that Brett has said. Obviously, you know, the beginning of this disclosure was a sudden development for all of us. I've got to say, I think my, you know, my faculty and staff were in a good position because of the work that we've done for the last couple of years with regard to platforms and, you know, the work that we've done with Canvas. I'll say that early on with the closure, our focus really was on connecting to kids and making sure that we connected to all families. We spent a lot of time, you know, in the early days, really trying to make sure that we communicated and that every student in each grade level had connected with someone. You know, in some cases, similar to being in school, you know, kids connect, you know, more with some teachers than others. And we found that not all kids were engaging with every teacher at the same time. However, we did find that the majority of students were connecting with someone. And those that weren't, we certainly took great pains between the teaching staff, the grade-level teams, the PPS staff, myself. We took great pains to make sure that we reached out to those families and made sure that they were connected as well. For us, you know, we're in a good position because, you know, the majority of our teachers use Canvas. I guess if you're looking for silver linings in a situation like this, the silver lining, or one of the silver linings that I've found is a couple of the, the very few outliers that I've had have jumped on board and have joined. Some of the teachers that were using a different platform have opted to switch to Canvas just because, you know, teachers and students and parents are, you know, if they're tech savvy at all and in tune at all, are in tune with Canvas just because so many of our faculty are using it. So that's, I, you know, I'd say that that has been a, you know, a silver lining. For us, we've spent a lot more time on communication with families, on streamlining our practices. As we got into shifting from providing review work and reinforcement work to providing new material, really it was about the teams working together to figure out what communication method they were going to use to communicate with students, to communicate with parents, working very closely with the LLL team so that all 6th grade teachers and all teachers of 6th grade students were working together to send information home. In, you know, in some cases, that's the grade level and the core content area teachers working together. 6th grade teachers, they send, you know, a daily email home to every 6th grade student that contains all of the work for the following day. 7th grade does everything through Canvas. 8th grade, they've chosen to provide the work at the beginning of the school week and then support throughout the week. So it varies from grade level to grade level. But again, as I said, the important thing that we've really focused on at the middle school level is making sure that all teachers at each grade level are doing the same thing and are communicating well with each other. And that's really, that's really helped. The LLL teachers, and again, you know, as all of you have had kids that have come through the middle school, you know that those teachers are kind of all over the place just in terms of their discipline. Some are on Canvas, some aren't. Some disciplines aren't. Phys ed don't necessarily lend itself to Canvas. But they're in the process of creating an LLL digital agenda book that's gonna be shot out or available via link to all students at all times with the weekly assignments. And again, our grade-level teams have worked very hard to make sure that they've kind of made their practices routine. Teachers are using any variety of methods to reach out to students. You know, I've had teachers create YouTube channels. I've had teachers who are not, would not consider themselves the most tech-savvy faculty that I have, who have created their own YouTube channels and are sending videos to their students every day. I've got teachers that are calling on the phone and walking students through math problems on a regular basis. We've done some Zoom sessions at all three grade levels. I guess in answer to Mark's question with regard to Zoom and some of the issues that I see, and again, I think this may answer Matt's question as well and Diane's about, you know, feedback that I've received from parents. I'd say 98% of the feedback that I've received so far has been very positive. The two areas that I've, I guess constructive criticism may be too strong a term, but have received questions about are the idea of synchronous teaching and whether it be Zoom or another particular platform, it really doesn't matter. One of the things that I have spent time talking with those individuals about are some of the obstacles to that. One of the things that we're very careful to make sure that we're not doing at the middle school, but I would venture to say this goes for Ed and Brett as well, is I am not looking for anybody to use a method of instruction that's gonna create an equity of access issue for any student. And, you know, some of the, some of the issues and questions we've had about synchronous learning, I think, really does that. So what we've chosen to use the synchronous learning for really is about connecting with students, connecting students to each other. I've heard some of that with the elementary school as well and high school too. My own son has participated in a number of, you know, sessions with the high school freshmen. So we've used it in that way. We've also used synchronous learning and Zoom for reinforcement and support. I do have several teachers that are holding office hours. And I'd say I have many more teachers that are offering that as an opportunity to schedule a time individually or in a small group with a teacher. You know, I know when we get to Emily's opportunity to speak, she'll share that many of our special ed teachers, our AIS teachers, and our support teachers are using Zoom and synchronous learning as an opportunity to support their resource room students and, you know, Special Ed 504 and those students. students, uh, and, and, you know, special ed 504 and those students that struggle and require AIS services. So overall, I think it's been, uh, you know, I think it's been a good opportunity. I think it's been a good, good opportunity to kind of test our chops and, and, and see what we can do. Teachers are working very, very hard. I think this is, you know, myself included, I think, uh, this platform, uh, everything takes about three times as long as it does. If you had an opportunity to step across the hall, to meet with a group of students, to meet with a teacher, um, to get anything done, uh, within the school setting. Uh, and I certainly think that, uh, that, um, you know, there's, there's definitely something lost in trying to maintain a program within this setting. However, I do think our teachers are working very hard to do the very best we can, uh, and they can with the situation that they have. I don't know if people have, uh, you know, specific questions.
Questions? Have any of these questions, John? Thanks.
Can we go to Ed now, Diane?
Yep.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Diane. Hi, everybody. It's great to, uh, great to see you. I hope, uh, you and your families continue to be, uh, healthy and safe. As some of my colleagues who are in this meeting will attest, uh, on Zoom, I am hopefully uncharacteristically long-winded. I think it's because I can't pick up the social cues, uh, you know, that, yeah, I can't see if your eyes are glazing over, so I'm going to ask Whitney to just mute me if I keep rambling. I don't know when to stop. So being said, um, I want to, um, you know, go back to somewhere where Joe started because I was thinking about this day today. And John and Brett, Mark Berg will remember, March 13th, Friday, a little bit after 2:00, we were invited to come down to the district conference room and assembled there and we learned of the county executive's decision to close schools. And I have to be very candid with you all, and, and I believe my faculty felt the same way. I personally was not ready for that announcement. And quite honestly, it was one of the last things I ever would have predicted that the county executive and then later the governor was going to close school. I mean, in the high school, middle school, elementary school, as you know, we practice fire drills and we practice shelter in place and lockdown drills and things of that nature. We never gave any, I never gave any thought to a pandemic. So within that, uh, context and my faculty, kids and I all going home, that's where we needed to, to start. And I want to echo some of what Joe has said, Brett and John, and commend, uh, the faculty and our students and our families for rising to this challenge and, and all, all three constituent groups working incredibly hard, um, to continue instruction in, in some fashion. And I, I don't want to be a, uh, what, what's the word, a boo bird? And I certainly, I certainly don't want to look at the glass half empty, but I, I also want us to remember that what we're doing now, what our faculty are doing now, what our kids are doing now, is not and can't be and is not intended to be a replacement for the face-to-face instruction that our kids receive every day. Again, kids are working incredibly hard. Families, I don't know how families do it now that, I mean, you know, working from home, kids are home, schools at home, that's an enormous amount of stress. So as a faculty, we started by thinking about, um, three things, thinking about the welfare of our students, thinking about their hardware, do they have the tools they need in order to access these educational materials and thinking about continuing instruction. And we pursued as a faculty as best we could, uh, all three directions simultaneously. In terms of continuing instruction, um, in confer, uh, confering with John and Brett and my, uh, colleagues in the county, we decided for the short and medium term that two hours a day total, two hours a day total, um, was a reasonable amount of, uh, educational materials for students to continue their instruction. So that's what we asked faculty to provide. Understanding, because luckily we have some, uh, members of our faculty who have experience in remote learning, that it takes students about twice as long to complete tasks in an online environment as it does in a, in a real-time environment. So in addition to providing two hours of instructional materials per day total, learning activities which could be readings, uh, essay assignments, worksheets, asynchronous videos that faculty post, curated videos that faculty provide, some video conferencing, um, we wanted faculty too to be available to students throughout the school day, 7:35 to 2:35, um, to answer questions and to provide targeted instruction through whatever medium made most sense to faculty. Now, what we are, uh, learning, what my faculty are learning, and as you know, as parents of teenagers, is that when teenagers are in their natural habitat, they do not arise at 6:00 AM. They arise at 10:00 AM or 11:00 AM. And I don't begrudge them that. I think that's what their bodies need. But what that means is that the school day for kids maybe starts at 11:00 or 12:00 and extends into the evening. So faculty are responding to students, supporting students for, you know, a big chunk of time during the day. Certainly not complaining about that, where we want to work together to provide supports to our students, but what students are experiencing, experiencing at home is very different. So as we continued instruction, uh, Mark Berg and I asked faculty to connect with us and let us know if faculty were not hearing from any students, uh, um, at all, because we wanted to make sure that every student who needed a computer was, uh, received the computer. So in conjunction with Steve Jensen, and, uh, he, he's, Steve is going to be angry at me for, for, uh, for mentioning this, but I have to say, Steve Jensen has been indefatigable in providing technology to students who need technology. And I really think that needs to be, uh, recognized. Now, has it been four days, Steve, or five days that you've had pickups for, for, uh, four days? So, um, we feel, thanks to Steve's work and, and really casting in that wide, we feel that we've provided, um, any student who's asked for technology, technology to access, uh, what they need, uh, uh, through the internet. And lastly, while we were trying to keep those plates spinning, we wanted to make sure that, um, the welfare of all of our students was being attended to by the school. As I mentioned, our, our thinking, and this is not, uh, uh, anything that's, that's, um, not well-known, is that families and kids are undergoing a great deal of stress right now. So between Mr. Berg, me, our counselors and May Brody, we decided that we wanted to call each high school family, um, and check in. So we divided the, the alphabet. We made those calls usually, uh, or typically leaving a voicemail message just to say, hey, how are you? How's everybody doing? Do you need anything? If you need anything, contact me, Mark, May, Robert or Jeff. So we made those check-in calls and, uh, as we did, we were able to connect with the, some of our, our parents. So currently, as we approach the end of the quarter, um, tomorrow I've asked, Mark and I have asked faculty to let us know, uh, teacher by teacher, let us know the names of those students who have not engaged, uh, in a meaningful way with the assignments of the work that the faculty have provided. And what we would like to do next as a next wave of context is reach out to those families and students and again, to say, how's everything going? Do you need everything? Everything okay? The last thing we want to do, and this is a delicate balance, of course, is to add any pressure whatsoever on, on these households. And certainly we don't want to add any academic pressure. So that's the next couple of days as we end, uh, as we get to the end of the third quarter. Lastly, um, as it's been a couple, three, four weeks now, um, within the context of supporting students, within the context of fostering connections between students, we've been very lucky, um, to have, uh, some students propose and are working at executing some virtual spirit activities. So for example, the 10th grade class is sponsoring a virtual spirit week next week. The environmental club is sponsoring an environmental day, Earth Day on Wednesday of next week. Our club meetings have begun. Uh, our athletic, uh, teams have begun meeting. Today, uh, Mr. Berg and I piloted, um, Zoom. We asked to have a ninth grade class meeting and we had about 30, uh, of our students, of our ninth graders, uh, meet with us in a, in a video conference. It was a lot of fun. It was great, uh, to see all their faces. I have to say as well, with 30 faces on the screen, it was a little intense. Luckily, Mark was there to help out, but I think we had some good Q and A, uh, through the chat function, uh, with our students. So we're going to continue to explore, we're going to continue to experiment, um, to meet our students' needs while we're out of school. But I, I can say that, um, I know our 39th graders today, certainly our faculty, we, we keenly want to return to school as soon as it's safe, uh, safe to do so. So, um, Whitney didn't get the hook out and didn't mute me, so I guess I didn't, uh, go too long, but, uh, we'll see what happens again.
Any questions? Steve?
Hi, Steve.
Hi, how are you guys? I'd like to just thank you guys for, for coming in tonight and, and presenting your, your buildings views and, and I really appreciate all the hard work that you're doing. Um, the three of you alluded to, um, what I think is other teachers kind of going above and beyond what they normally would do for their classroom to help train and, and roll out, um, support and software for, for the other teachers to get up to speed. And, and I'd like to see if we can recognize them some way, Joe. I don't know if I have all their names, but maybe you and, um, Susan can work out something that we can do for some kind of recognition when all this is over.
Sure. It's a great idea, Steve. I'll, I'll rely on Steve Jensen and our administrators to, uh, to let me know, uh, just so, so you, the board members know, uh, we have been, uh, we have been meeting weekly as an administrative team, uh, so I'll make sure to calendar that for our, uh, agenda for this coming Monday and we'll, we'll be sure to attend to that. Thank you for, for the suggestion. Diane, I, oh, I'm sorry, Jacqueline's got a question.
I just, um, wanted to ask all three of you, do you have specific, um, goals or timelines about how often you aim to communicate with families regularly and with teachers regularly? And do you have similar guidelines for your teachers to follow for how often to communicate with their families?
Well, um, I don't know if we want to start. Brett, do you want to go or who wants to go first? Okay, so, um, in terms of, um, communicating with faculty, um, I meet with, uh, departments on a regular basis, either, it's typically every week and have started, uh, I had my first faculty meeting week before last, uh, meeting with faculty again tomorrow as well as our professional staff in a separate meeting. So those meetings will probably be weekly. In terms of, uh, aside from the phone calls that I mentioned, in terms from parent, of parent communications, I'm, I'm balancing the, 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 the need or the desire to want to communicate with parents with the desire not to clog their, their inboxes up, uh, their email inboxes up. So that's the balance we're trying to, to measure. For, for faculty or, in conversing with them, uh, you know, I've asked them, and I believe John and Brett as well, during school hours to be available to students. So I'm assuming that if, if parents have a question for faculty that they email the faculty during the school day, there'll be a response, uh, relatively quickly. If not that day, then I would guess, uh, the next day.
At the, at the middle school level, I, you know, I'll echo what, what Ed said as well, um, you know, I'm meeting, I'm meeting with my team leaders on a weekly basis. I know my teams are probably meeting with each other, uh, more now than, uh, than, than they even do when we're in school. Again, just because of all the coordination and the communication that needs to take place, uh, in this environment. I am, uh, attempting my first faculty meeting tomorrow, uh, with a, with a large group. I'm looking forward to that and seeing everyone. But again, I think that communication in this environment is the key. I'd say, uh, my, my teachers are doing a fantastic job of communicating with, uh, with, with students and with parents. As I said during my report, uh, much of what we've done is really tried to streamline that process at all three grade levels. Again, to, to echo what Ed said, not to, uh, not to clog their inboxes, um, as, as much as we possibly can, but to provide, uh, enough information for them to be successful and then do, do it in as, uh, precise a way as possible. I would also say that, um, you know, I believe that all of my teachers are available, uh, you know, I will say 7:35 to 2:35 on a daily basis, um, but I, I will tell you that I know for a fact, um, just based on, on communication that I'm copied in on, uh, as well as what I'm aware of and the feedback that I'm getting from students, um, that the teachers at the middle school are, are, you know, communicating with parents, um, you know, well into the evening as well.
And I think for me, it's the same as far as the balance of, you know, I mentioned earlier, Diane, when you had asked about it, I think that's, it's huge and not, you know, uh, clogging up inboxes and, and parents are getting a lot of information thrown at them. I mean, now it's probably, you know, it's settling in a little bit and hopefully they're getting more comfortable, but, uh, even my specialist team decided to, and I'm actually going to try to send it out later today now that power's back when I was having problems with school messenger, but, um, they, they try to set out a whole week's worth of stuff at once in one email so that it just slows things down. I actually got the, the, the most volume of positive response when we first started doing that than anything else, just because, you know, thank you, because it's, there's a lot coming at us. So on, uh, for me, I'm focusing more on grade level chair. My, my staff, you know, to put 65 or so people, um, it could be a little tough. I've had one or two ask about whether we were going to have a faculty meeting because we would have one coming up. But, um, mostly I've been, I've been, I've met with my grade level chairs, we had a Zoom meeting there. My next scheduled one is actually a week from Friday. We're going to, I was going to send something out and see if they wanted to keep it the same time just for some level of normalcy, I guess. But that's how I've chosen to communicate more. You know, and they kind of, uh, even in some cases, in addition to the normal responsibilities of principal, which I think this is also part of one anyway, um, I try to just be that, like, you know, that, that old cheesy term that God on the side for them and, and try to support them the best I can. I mean, a lot of the, like during the school year, I think a lot of the meet and the, you know, where the rubber meets the road is the work they're doing with their kids and I want to support them the best way I can. So, um, right now it's been primarily, uh, communicating through grade level chairs and then they're reaching out to me individually on behalf of their grade, luckily with the grades being, um, you know, smaller than usual, it kind of helps. But haven't, haven't jumped into the whole Zoom meeting with the whole staff. You know, for me, I want to have a, uh, if there's an agenda, a, a list of agenda items we haven't been able to cover in the regular way we're communicating, I'd be happy to do it. It just seemed a little, um, cumbersome to try to communicate that way. So we've been doing it in smaller chunks and the Zoom meetings with them, the last one we had was nine or 10 of us, it seemed to be much more manageable. So we'll be doing that again in a, a week and change. And that's how I've chosen to do it. Cheerleading. I think for, for me, some, the, the more fun comes out of some of the, uh, the cheerleading opportunities I have to kind of point out some of the good things they are doing and just let them know, hey, we ended another week and, um, put out a video with a brag tag stuck on my head or something like that and people seem to respond pretty well. So I help them that way.
And I got to see the video that some of your staff put out for the students. That was really nice to see.
Yeah, yeah. Again, you know, the, I think the specialist team, the PE team kind of put that together. And, uh, we're working on another one, hopefully maybe put out Friday, that'll, uh, be a celebration of some of the physical activities primarily from the PE, uh, team. And like I said, they earned, uh, as they do each year, pie face, uh, pie in the PE team's face and then the next level is they get to get me. So, uh, we put a little way of piecing that together so it, you know, the kids can kind of help participate. So stay tuned.
Diane, I just, I wanted to make sure that we, uh, we gave Emily an opportunity to address the, uh, the work that, um, that the special education, uh, staff in, in all three buildings is doing with, uh, with the challenge, the particular challenges of dealing with, uh, with that, uh, part of our student population. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to turn it over to Emily.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, uh, so the special education faculty has been providing, um, support in all the ways that, um, my colleagues have shared through synchronous learning, asynchronous learning, um, emails, phone calls. It really depends on the needs of the students as well as the needs of the family and what, what their grade level teams are using. Starting, so, uh, Dr. Davenport took us back to March 13th. I recall coming back from the administrative council meeting on March 13th, um, and make, starting to make packets, um, that some of our OT and PT providers had already, had already put, um, together for us. And then, um, I think by that Tuesday, I was sending out, uh, massive volumes of, of packets to our families, knowing that many of them at that point would not have access to technology and needed to get, um, started on that review and reteaching, um, and, uh, enrichment opportunity. On March 19th, I had the opportunity to hold my first On March 19th, I had the opportunity to hold my first Zoom CSE meeting. It was through, it was an out of district placement. And since then, I've held probably about 15 CSE meetings, both in district and out of district with parents and faculty, and they've all gone very, very well. I give parents an option to reschedule and some, some have asked to. And if we are back in the building this year, then we will do so. But by and large, those have been very, very successful. On March 25th, I had my first Zoom meeting and it was with my related service providers because those are providers whose services, we're talking about speech and language, counseling, occupational therapy, physical therapy, teacher of the deaf services and vision services through BOSI's. Those services are not really tied to the grade level content. And so they work separately and need to be planned for separately. And so I, I worked with them. We had a faculty meeting where we talked about the, how they're going to deliver services. And we talked about all those different opportunities. On March 30th, I had my first full special education faculty meeting on Zoom and reiterated the, the variety of options. And then at that time pulled the special education faculty to find out what they were comfortable using. By and large, most of them were out of the gate using both synchronous as well as asynchronous learning opportunities and platforms. And since then, those, some of those who, who had not, did not check off that synchronous learning box, I know are, are doing it. Because it really depends on, on what the students needs. And to reiterate what John spoke of in terms of the synchronous learning, it really is about making that connection and giving a social and relational opportunity to be reaffirmed for students. And that is, that is first and foremost, the, the first step in helping students stay engaged in their learning during this time. So since then, my teachers and, our teachers and providers have been providing resource room via Zoom, phone call check-ins, sometimes daily depending on the student and the family, recorded videos, math videos, modifying assignments that the general education teacher is, is providing. The teachers have been all fantastic in collaborating. The special education teachers are shared as, as teachers on Canvas, on Google Classroom. And so they're able to see it in real time what's happening. A lot of, a lot of the students, a lot of the teachers in my three, Rhinebeck High School, special education teachers have developed individual Google classrooms for the students. So they have a one stop shop of their assignments. And that's been really helpful for our students with executive functioning needs. My E and L teachers are doing very similar activities. We want, we recognize that there's the need to address specific skill gaps and work towards IEP goals, but we also want to balance the, the relational component, the workload and the acknowledgement that we want to keep at two hours a day with, with the specific needs and skills. And so it is a balance and it's a conversation that they're having with the core content teachers. And I think it's going really well. I think that there are times when sometimes there's too much happening and there are too many services being, being offered and it's a balancing for the particular families. But I'm reaching out to families and checking in with them via, via phone calls and we're, we're having some troubleshooting conversations when we need to. I also happen to have my own Google Classroom for my special education faculty. And so I, I meet with them weekly on Zoom. It's an optional sharing meeting where we can problem solve and, and discuss best practices that they're finding. But I also post things on my Google Classroom that they, they can respond to on a regular basis. I also actually, I, I try to do all of the things that, that they might explore and do for their students. And so I even record a Friday message for them, kind of congratulating them, congratulating them that they got through the week and, and celebrating that. I think, I think it is difficult. I think that we're dealing with, we're dealing with a situation in which our students who are in greatest need, need a lot of support and it's difficult to provide that in a remote setting. And I think that my, our teachers are going above and beyond and working with, with family and with the students. And in some cases, we've seen students blossom in this, in this remote learning environment, which has been exciting to see.
Any questions?
I have a quick question. So I know you spoke about related services. Are those service providers able to do Zoom sessions with the children that have IEPs for, let's say, occupational therapy and physical therapy?
Yes, immediately following that March 25th meeting, they reached out to parents individually. Our OT department sent a Google Form document, a survey where they were able to find out the best times for the families to provide that direct synchronous learning. And our speech and language therapists wrote individual emails, as did our school counselors and our PT. And so they reached out specifically to the families to let them know the variety of options to, in ways to deliver service and discuss with them individually what was best for them. And there are weeks in which they are providing two speech and language sessions a week, for example, or two OT sessions. And there are some that they're providing one and then giving additional activities. And so it does vary week to week because they're trying to meet the needs of the, of the family as well.
Great, that's good to hear, thanks.
It's actually been a beautiful rollout. There was some conversation about confidentiality on Zoom and I did, I did ask all of my providers to not provide sessions in groups. So they're providing individual sessions. So in fact, some of our providers are working longer. Like our OT providers who only are in the district a couple of days a week are actually working more than they would be if they were, if we were at CLS and BMS and RHS. So it, it, it's complicated and they all have families of their own, including newborn babies in some cases, and they're really balancing it and doing a great job. And I've received positive feedback from, from families.
Great, thank you.
Emily, I know with student IEPs, there are certain very specific requirements that the school has to provide. And obviously in this environment, can't be possibly doing all of those things the way they're originally made out. What does that mean for the school or what do you know? Does that mean going forward? Is it just kind of understood that we can't possibly do maybe everything that?
Right, and, and the delivery of education is just, it's just not the same. And so the, the IEPs are, are crafted around a program of study and an instructional model that is just not there. And so you're absolutely right, there are services that do not look the same at all. And I think that the most important piece, Diane, is that our teachers are being responsive to students and families and are meeting them where they are. And so sometimes, as John mentioned, that's a phone call, as well as the, the digital reach out. In some cases, it's, it's a scheduled Zoom session three days a week. And it really, it really does depend. And it's, it's keeping an open line of communication and recognizing that, you know, this is not ideal for anyone and, and not just our special education students, but all of our students are going to need some TLC when they return to our buildings. And so it's, it's with that kind of collaborative problem solving model that, that we're, we're approaching families and they've been warmly accepted and, and received.
Thank you. Any other questions for them? I actually, if you don't mind, Ed, I forgot to ask you a question when it was your turn. Can you tell us, obviously, students that typically go to BOSI's and not go to BOSI's? Can you tell us anything about those students, what's, if there's anything happening?
Sure. It was, I think, probably the week before last, Mitchell Schron, principal of the Career Technical Institute through BOSI's communicated with all of his colleagues, with principals in the area. And my understanding is what our technical institute students are receiving is, you know, for lack of a better term, pencil and paper exercises to continue their instruction. So I think it's, it's like, you know, tearing down an engine in real life versus, you know, on pencil and paper, seeing what gear ratios are all about and things of that nature. So they're continuing, it's certainly not a substitute by any stretch for the hands-on education that they are, receive at CPI, but they are continuing instruction to the best of their ability through a digital format. And I think like, as the high school faculty, as we, you know, continue to work more and more within this context, just like our teachers are doing and continue to do, they'll find other resources that they're able to use.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? Joe, I have a question. Just a couple of parents and people reached out to me today. Listening, and listening to the governor sounds possible that kids could go back to school before the end of the year. You know, when he talks about the economy not opening unless schools and transportation are all working together, it sounds possible that that could happen. I'm wondering if you're in the process of, I mean, I don't think it would, it would happen the way, you know, we went to school in March. And I'm sure schools won't be given a lot of leeway on that or guidance, probably some very vague granders, if I got to guess what it might look like. I'm wondering if, if you and the administrators are starting to talk about what that might look like or make plans for what that would look like if we were to go back to school on some type of modified schedule or, you know, a small percentage of students at a time, something like that. I'm wondering if that's, you know, if that's been the last few days we've discussed.
I'd like to say we're that optimistic. What my takeaway from what I'm hearing is, is considerably less optimistic than that. Nobody knows until the governor says what he needs to say. And I think we've all been hearing, especially our governor, less so at the federal level, that, that we need to make sure that safety wise, we're ready to reopen our schools, our businesses, our economy before, before that, that can happen. So we, we've not had that conversation yet. We also have at least two more weeks before the, the next announced end of school closure, which would have us going back to school should that come to pass on Thursday, April 20, April 29th. But that's certainly something we will discuss if it appears that we're tracking towards getting back sooner or even getting back on the 29th. I mean, I, I, even though I'm working from, from home most days, I'm, I'm glued to the TV at about 11:00 AM every day to hear what's going to come out of our governor's mouth next and, and hanging on the date when he's going to put out there. And at least lately, there hasn't been any date. So we'll see, we'll obviously have that conversation as an administrative team. We haven't had that conversation up to this point because it has seemed much more distant than you're, than you're thinking it might be. But, you know, we're, we're trying to read the tea leaves and there really isn't, to me, there isn't a lot of, a lot of sense to burn energy on trying to figure out what, what might happen. And I doubt, quite honestly, since the governor has, at least has tried to be at least a couple of weeks ahead of the curve in terms of any announcements, I, I would be surprised, nothing's impossible in this, in this day and age, but I would be surprised if we got an announcement on April 27th that in fact, we were all going to be back in school on April 29th. So I believe we'll, we'll get a reasonable amount of lead time. You never know. We'll obviously start having those conversations sooner than later, but we have not had those conversations yet.
Any other questions? I guess we'll move on to the 2020-21 budget development.
I'm going to turn that right over to Tom. I know he sent out some information to board members during the course of the day today. So Tom, I'm going to let you take it.
Thank you very much. And Ed, if you talked about eyes glazing over, this will only take about two minutes.
No, 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 no.
Well, it's very interesting in my world, but there are some people it won't be so interesting. So I just want to give you, first of all, the budget vote. As, as you all know, currently there is no budget vote date currently scheduled. The governor will announce that at some point in the future. I don't anticipate at all that it's just going to be a board only decision on budgets and their approvals. It does appear that the governor is really insisting upon board, on votes, board member elections. And no, it doesn't affect our school, but there are many school districts that have transportation and capital project propositions that are typically on the ballot at that time. So everything that deals with the budget works from the date, the budget vote date backwards. So once he, you know, you know, a vote date is set, then we'll work backwards from there. There's like 40 days, 45 days before, 60 days before different things. I think the biggest things to know is this could happen fairly quickly, once it's determined what that date is. He really needs to give us about almost two months notice to be able to do everything by deadlines. So, so, but the first thing that will, will happen though is, the first thing was, it gets put in the newspaper. But the second thing will be for board member petitions. All right, those will be next and that will be fairly quickly and that will happen very quick. That's one of the first deadlines as we get towards the budget is getting board member petitions in to be put on the ballot. So that being said, there's, many things have occurred over the past couple of weeks. None of it really all that positive, but there is some. So the first thing I want to do is to start off from where we were last time. And that is, I would like you to, I'm going to put this up here and I know no one can see this, but this is the budget process. It's a four page report that goes through the history of where we began and where we currently are at. So what I would like you to do is go to page number three and that will start us off. And at the top of the page, it should say Rhinebeck Central School District, the 2020-21 Budget Development Process. Okay? And this is-
This is what you sent us today, right? Sorry.
It was sent last night.
You're right, okay.
It was sent last night. I think this would be, this is called Budget Changes Draft Number Three, as far as a budget file. When we last left, left, when we left off last time, we were above the tax levy limit by 156,320. We've been able to reduce it and I'll show you how it, it has occurred. First of all, there's been adjustments on the revenue side. So we got state aid from, based on the governor's budget that was approved at the very beginning of April.
That was the state budget that was approved?
The state budget, the state budget, yes. Our state aid run was actually pretty decent, to tell you the truth. We only lost $6,365 in our state aid run. And the reason for that loss was that was our increase in foundation aid. So basically, everybody's state aid was reduced by their increase in foundation aid. So we had a very small increase, so we had a very small decrease. Just to let you know, that has caused issues across the state because this did affect the neediest school districts, some school- Some school district lost upwards of $10 million. So there, there's some, there's, there were some big losses out there and then they were to the most needy school districts. So that may play into the cuts that may be forthcoming, which I'll get to. So there was some good and bad about this budget and I'll, I'll talk about some of the good. And if you take a look at this, we did get a slight increase in our excess cost aid. It just means we have more special education students being registered, so that's generating some more aid. But one of the biggest things is they broke out BOSI's aid, all those material aids, those expense-driven aids that was put into foundation aid, it got all taken apart. So those expense-driven aids are back into where they are with BOSI's aid textbook in the various different types of, of expense-driven aids. Transportation aid is another one. So that was good and a good respect for that. Can't say that may not come back next year. So that, that's one part of it. Now, to go along with state aid also is, there is potential for state aid cuts this year and for next year. Okay? So as a part of the budget approval process, remember they run from April 1st to March 31st. Their fiscal year is different than ours. So they're just starting their fiscal year. At the end of this month is going to be their first look in at state revenues and state expenditures. So in the budget documents, if budget revenues are less than 99% of what is expected or expenditures are greater than 102%, which I can guarantee are probably going to happen on both sides of the, of, of the ledger, the department or division of budget has the ability to make state aid cuts. So that's a potential for not only this year's state aid, but next year's state aid. There is no methodology about how this will be applied. But remember earlier, I did say that the state aid cuts that were in the, in this adopted state budget hit the, the neediest districts the most because remember this was foundation aid increase that was taken away from every school district. So one of the things someone may have seen that the, 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 the state aid runs and there's a line there called pandemic adjustment. And for our school district, I believe it was 228,000 and change. And I thought initially at first that those are potentially the high end of what could be taken away from us. But in fact, that money can't be taken away from us. That's actually from the federal government. This is from the CARES. I can't remember exactly what that all stood for, but that was the federal package as far as it came to New York State. That is a part of, and that was distributed by Title One, or Title One allotments. So those were separated out there and that money can't be taken away from us. We always thought that was a pot of money. That's the potential top end. That's money that's guaranteed by the federal government to our school district. If, if the governor takes that money away from us, then the federal government's going to take it away from the state. So that money is ours. So, but our, the rest of our money is fully open to be able to be reduced. So that's a bad side of it, but we don't know what that's going to mean. I'll talk about some safeguards along that ways in a little bit. But getting back to this process on the revenue side, though we said we did have a loss of about $6,365. I did make some other minor adjustments, but the biggest adjustment of all, I had to reduce our interest in earnings. Interest investments have just, they just nosedived completely. Where I thought at one point earlier this year, me and Christine had figured we were going to get about $200,000 worth of interest if things had stayed the same. And now we're looking like, okay, we're going to be, you know, maybe 100,000. We're looking at next year going, oh, I, I, 50,000 would be great. I'm hoping with the rebound of economy, interest rates will come back up. But if interest rates stay where they are, you know, that, that, expect to get only 10 to 20,000 dollars in interest next year. It's really low, the investment rates at this time. But on the good side though, going out for bonds or for band anticipation notes and eventually bonds, we hope to, to, to get, get a much lower interest rate that will help us save on that side. So I did have to reduce altogether between the increases and decreases on the revenue side, basically of about $59,000. I had to reduce the revenue side. So that, that was one part of it. But if we turn the page over, we can talk about the deletions that we are proposing to make. And so if we go to the last page of that, one of the items that came up was, one of the deducts is teacher salaries for professional development. And speaking with, with Mr. King, he recommended we take out the $10,000 professional development for responsive classroom. Marvin Krebs will be able to fund individual teachers as they request it for, for over the summertime. So he's going to take care of that from within his, within Marvin's budget. So we were able to reduce the budget by 10,000. One of the things that I did last week with Ms. Davison was to go through each of our special education students and went through each of them and determined I could reduce about $100,000. And really what it came down to was I had an extra person in residential placement that I didn't, and that, that basically was the 100,000 was. So that's one thing also in the state budget, the school districts now picked up that additional 20% the state paid. So basically the share is 60% school district, 40% county, and New York State is zero. This is a one-year proposal, but we'll have to see what year, what next year brings us. But that did cost us an additional about $80,000 and that was already in the budget. So that's not an additional, it was something that was known. But I hope that was one item in, in the state approved budget that would disappear, but it did not. So we're able to reduce our tuitions to BOSI's and other places by about 100,000. And one last good piece of news is our health insurance. We, just before we got closed down and actually we were kind of lucky, I guess, in a way because we actually had our, our DEHIC meeting a week prior to actually, when we typically would have it. And as it would be, we did set the rates for next year. And rates were reduced to 4%, but in reality, because of the Medicaid population that is in our district, actually had negative rates, I was able to reduce health insurance by 120,000. So come to the bottom line right now, we're still over the tax levy limit by a little over $4,000. But there's still some work to be done and we still have time to discuss some things. So any questions so far about where what I call now draft number three stands? Okay, so we still have some more work to do. And like we said, until we get a, a, a vote date set by the governor, we won't even know when, in fact, it's even now, it's highly recommended that we do not adopt a budget at this time. That, that, that went out to everybody last week is to not, do not adopt the budget if you can. And if you have already adopted a budget, they were trying to find out how, the attorneys were looking to see how you could un-adopt the budget to be able to re-adopt it for later on, because I guess a few school districts had in fact done that. The next document I would like to go over with, and this is the Items for Consideration. It's a three-page one. And first I thought it was upside down, but it's not. It's a three-pager and it starts out with new items in the first draft, the 2021 budget. This is a document you saw previously. This lists everything that's on, that is, is new to the budget of significant size. I believe there's other little ones, but these are the significant ones. Everything from athletics and textbooks to a CLS point four counselor, sustainability initiatives and the things of that. So that was initial, just 529,000, reduced it by 10,000 for responsive classroom, it's still 519,000. So these are all new things in there. So there are potentially some items there if we need to swap out. Definitely things that we can discuss as we go forward. I think we're still a little bit early in this as to figuring out what may, maybe one of the things we may want to do with that list is to prioritize it. If we did have to make cuts, is we put that in a prioritized order? That's something for administrators to, to start thinking about or something you have in your budget over the years and is not new, that, that we may need to think about reallocation. Because what I want to do is really get to the next page. And the next page are items that we're currently considering for, for this budget cycle. And we've taken a couple of things off the list, but we've also have some things that are still remain on here and, and one that's been added that, that I think will be for discussion. I mean, things that we still would like to add it, whether it comes out of, there's, there's some other things I'll talk about. Additional funding for arts and education, a modest, you know, $5,000 increase. Replace the light board and projector in the auditorium. I think the last time we met, that, that document said soundboard, but Dr. Davenport did reach out and did find out they were looking for a light board, not a soundboard. That was 25,000. One of the items that was on here last time, which was for, to do at least for a one-to-one computing model, and we had it in there for $50,000. I know Steve Jensen probably will have the ability here to discuss a little bit about what this one-to-one model looked like, but he did, with the help of Marvin Krebs, put together a, a bit of a budget here for consideration in this budget cycle. But it also affects future budget cycles. So it's just not a one year. So we'd be looking, if we were to do the full model, which I think Steve will be able to, to tell you what that model will look like, we were looking for $100,000 in the first three years of a, of a, a three-year lease. That would be to purchase, I believe it was a bit over three to 350 Chromebooks, something of that nature. So that would be looking to purchase those all at one time. But then you'll see an $80,000 for professional development for our high school staff. Marvin has looked at this and expounding upon what is incurred at the middle school. He figures that over two years, he would need basically about $160,000 for professional development. And then of course, in that third year would be $100,000 for that last year of that three-year lease. So that, that's, I know more to come on that part of it. So I just wanted to give you what those figures are and those, those are not in the current budget at all. So also had put in there a $6,000 for additional field trips in light of this crisis. I'm not sure if field trips are going to be something that will be occurring too much next year. So I don't know where that will go. But then you see two blanks there and it's additional instructional support and additional mental health support. One of the things that our administrators have brought to, to my attention is with the students coming back, they're concerned, like we've heard from each of the administrators, where some kids are thriving, some kids probably are not thriving and they will need support when they get back to us. Many kids have missed out on evaluations, so there'll be an increase in the amount of evaluations that they need done. Maybe additional AIS supports need to be put in for the various students who, you know, who, who need to get caught up, who may need some of that time. So there's some of that that we're concerned about. We don't have a figure for that right now, but we know it's something we should be considering. Okay? So those are ideas about items that we would still like to consider for this budget cycle. Now, there's two ways in which these funds could be founded. They could be, and there's something on the next page, I'll go through with you. But also at the same time, there was those items on the first page that we went through, new items in, in, in this budget that, that I would like our administrators to, to look at and really determine whether or not those programs or those items really, really are needed and whether we want to divert those resources to these endeavors. I, I think this crisis has had us take a different look at our budget and how, you know, how we could, to help out around, you know. But so with that in mind, I'd like to go to the last page and these are potential budget decreases for consideration. And, and, and believe me, this is just an option. I'm not, I don't think anybody is recommending this. It's just that in taking a look at this, as you know, we had three high school teachers retire this year. One of the options you see in front of us is, it's just, it's just an option to consider at this moment, but I want to help you read this. So in the first line, as you'll see, it's a reduction of that math position of a point six. So this would be a, looking for a point four math teacher. The next line being reading, and that is at this point, not to replace. And then in the last one being the science to be replaced by a point five. So that would be a halftime. I mean, Dr. Davenport has talked about if possible, being able to combine the math and science together for a full-time position, you know, as a possibility, finding a dual certified math science teacher. Not exactly the easiest of things to probably find, but worth, I think, the effort. So, so I mean, those are possibilities. We have quite a few. I, I think we'll have a few more budget meetings before we're having to, you know, make those decisions. Now, a couple of things also to let you know about that, that still are in limbo. Our capital project and the BOSI's capital project. I spoke with our financial consultants, so let's say yesterday afternoon, after, yesterday afternoon, I spoke with them. So they're coming up with plans to make and I don't know where this is going to go. Currently, how the budget is put in place is our capital project being completed this summer with final reports submitted by December 31st. Those, that's what we have to do to realize about $366,000 in state aid. In speaking with our financial consultants, I said, I'm very concerned and I don't know yet, and I hope to know within the next couple of weeks about the status of our project. I think we have everybody who's very willing and contractors to work, but the issue is supply chain. Just need one thing to go wrong in the supply chain and some part of the project doesn't get done and it has to get cut off for an entire, till the next summer. That would cause a financial crisis with the school district because we would have a big hole of $366,000. So he is putting together a plan with and without the project being done. And hopefully within the next couple of weeks, I will know what we believe the status of our current project is. I think the other big thing, and unfortunately I won't know to the middle of June, but I do have a DEHIC meeting tomorrow, the Executive Committee. One of the things I know that we'll be talking about is the DEHIC holiday that I've mentioned before. The DEHIC holiday is a one-month suspension of DEHIC premiums. Okay? It's, it's, it's a suspension for the employee and the employer. So because of the fund balances that has been created by the previous years of DEHIC, we're in a place in which I was 99.9% sure we were going to have a holiday. But with this crisis, it's brought up a couple of questions for the DEHIC board. And that is, we don't know the cost to DEHIC for this crisis. So when I was, we, we, we don't really know what that cost is going to be to DEHIC at all yet. We don't know how many members and related, you know, members of DEHIC. We don't know how many members and related, you know, members of DEHIC have contracted this. We've had a lot of discussion about it, you know, as much as that might be a greater cost to us, we also look at the other side, think about all the procedures and testing, my being one of them. I've had many of tests I was supposed to have get canceled, and, you know, so we also look at the same time, then, and people are afraid to go to the doctor now, they're doing more telehealth and things of that nature. So we might see an offset. As much as the crisis may create additional expenses, it may, at the same point, reduce our cost on the other side because of typical medical procedures and appointments aren't being made at this time. So as much as I was ninety-nine point nine percent sure, I'm now probably ninety percent sure we'll still have a holiday. And I'm hoping that we get that holiday. Of course, we do not budget for this holiday. That, that could be used as a stopgap measure, if we have state aid losses, if we have expenditures above and beyond what we think. From all various types of, of situations. One of the things that I've told my administrators too, even when we go and we approve a budget because of the uncertainty of state aid, that some things will be put off as far as purchasing. I've talked to Sheldon in, in, in this case, as far as his, his requirements in the equipment. He says, "Decisions on buying that equipment may not come to next spring when we know what the state aid picture looks like, and whether or not we need to divert those funds for equipment to other places and sources that we may need it." This is all new to us, and I'm, I'm hoping that our kids come back healthy and ready to learn. But until they're here, whether it be May first, June first, or September first, we want to be ready for them and support them wherever we can. So I'm sure you might have some questions. Oh, none, good.
Tom, on the capital project, state aid piece, you're saying that if we don't finish the project, we don't get the money this year or next year, but the money will come when the project's finished? There's no deadline?
Yeah, it just gets delayed until the following year. It's a half-year of payment, so we wouldn't get the half-year of payment, and then it would just be a full payment starting the following year when everything's complete. But we won't, we don't lose it out, it just pushes out that half a year, that half a year of state aid. It pushes it out fifteen years, is what it does. You'll, you'll get it later on, but we're not going to spend it either, you know, so we're not, we're not making principal, you know, principal and interest payments. All we're going to make is an interest payment on a band, if that's what happens.
Tom, on the capital project, I received a, an actual letter in the mail from a community member asking about the capital project and if the school being closed, if it was possible that we could get the project done sooner. You know, from what you're saying, I mean, I think a couple of reasons the answer is no to that. One, you're talking about the supply chain, but two, without knowing how long schools close, you can't just look down curtain wall, chancellor, right?
Well, you know, it, that's, that's, it's a great question. I, I think there are some things we're actually getting ahead of, to tell you the truth, as you, if you've, I, I don't know if anybody's been up to our, both, there to our, either of our schools recently, but our site developer, Del Signor, has been in site and working, because we always go through the question, first of all, is it necessary and essential? Yeah, we need to get this work done, especially with the kids not here. It's a great, it's great to have that equipment out there without having the kids around. So to me, it's a safety issue, so getting this stuff done now is great. The other thing that we always look at too, and, and I thank Joe for this, is can they do their job socially distancing themselves? As far as our site crew, yeah, they can do that. They're all in their separate machines, moving dirt around, they're not working in pairs. Our electricians, yeah, they work in pairs, but they work on opposite ends of the building. But we didn't allow our plumbers to come in. The plumbers were looking to do some work, but they're working in a confined space with more than, you know, two people. No, we're not going to let that happen. So we're hoping that, you know, as far as the plumbing is concerned, that's something you could put off until the summertime, so that wouldn't be an issue. I think, but there's other issues too, though, is that, I'll give you an example. We were supposed to get the inside of the lockers painted, or the lockers at CLS painted over spring break. The, the person was coming out of Nebraska. He, company wouldn't let him come from Nebraska here, they're afraid he was going to get caught here, quarantined here, didn't come now. Is he going to come back in the summer? Well, if everything's lifted and everything's good, yeah. You know, so I think it's more of, we're concerned about things like the window walls, you know? If they're still socially distancing themselves, there's no way they can put a window wall up all separate from each other. They're going to be in close contact with each other. So really, that's really one of our biggest things, is when does socially distancing ease? And then when that eases too, to me, it's some of the supplies, and, and I don't know, or have, there will be a meeting later this week with our contractors. And I know this is definitely one of the things on our agenda, and that is to find out. Now, I, I'm not saying this is the case, but I know this happened a few years ago. They had a supply chain issue with sheet rock. I think this goes back, oh, I can't remember, it was after one of the hurricanes or whatever, and then sheet rock was coming in, and it was filled with asbestos or something like that, and so, and all of a sudden, sheet rock wasn't around. Or if sheet rock was around, it was three times the price it was. So those are type of things I don't know of, and our contractors will have a better handle on that. We're hoping that, and this is one of the things I know that the Palumbo Group did ask each of the contractors, what supplies they had currently in their possession, and what they currently didn't have and still needed to get. So I think that will help us answer the question. Hopefully, within a couple of weeks, we'll have a good idea as to what could be accomplished or what not accomplished, but it really gets into when the governor opens the economy back up so that we can work in earnest. Like you said, most of this work was supposed to happen this summer. As far as I know, it's still all scheduled for this summer, but we'll know more in the next couple of weeks.
I'm wondering if we could, since people are paying attention to what's getting done, you know, maybe after that meeting, or as you know, we could update the website with any changes to the project or what might get done sooner or later, if that's possible.
What we expect is, I think it's a meeting this Thursday, Tom?
Yeah, it's with the contractors, not, not with the owners, it's the contractors.
Right, so there's, there's a construction meeting this Thursday, and my understanding is that they're going to discuss these questions that Tom has raised tonight. And likely, the Palumbo Group may have to rework the, the construction timeline. So once they do that, as a result of the discussion at Thursday's meeting, we should have a, a much clearer idea of what they anticipate can be done on schedule, what they anticipate may have to be pushed out, ultimately, how it'll affect the entire scope of work of the project. So when we have something to report, then we'll, we, we will put that out there, but right now, we'd just be guessing. And I'm, I'm reluctant to put speculative information out there and have to pull it back and then have to answer questions about, "Well, you told us this was going to be done by this, how come you changed, how come you didn't know?" Well, the reason we didn't know is obvious. There are forces out there beyond the control of, of all these contractors. And soon as, you know, if a contractor comes in and says, "I have all the supplies I need to do this job," all we have to do is wait for the governor to lift the, the New York on Pause regulations and let us all back in, working shoulder to shoulder to do this, then, then we know we're, we're dependent on the governor rolling back that, that Work Pause executive order. But until we know that, A, they can do it, and, and then until we know when the governor's going to let those kinds of construction jobs recommence, it's up in the air. So as soon as we have information that, that we feel is, is reliable, and the Palumbo Group will give us the rationale for any modification of the, the scope of work, then, yeah, we have no reason to, to keep that a secret at that point. But right now, we don't have that, so expect that soon, but we don't have it yet.
And Tom, as far as the, the list of possible additions to the budget, and I'm not sure how the other board members feel, but, you know, I just, right now, today, it just feels, for me, maybe a little bit uncomfortable about talking about adding things to the budget. I just think there's so many variables right now. We don't know, you know, it seems like there could be a lot of expenses that we don't anticipate that could happen. You know, the governor talking about taking away aid through the year next year. You know, I mean, I guess the good news is we have some more time to keep looking at this. We don't have to decide today. But I don't, like, I don't feel ready to talk about this today, just because, you know, I wish we had a little bit more information. You know, I know, we had, we've talked about, you know, there might be other places where we're saving money, maybe like a bus contract, or, you know, things we don't know. I just feel like there's a lot of things that might change going forward, so I'm not sure how I personally feel about adding anything in right now, today.
Well, we're not adding anything in today.
Yeah.
These are all possibilities, you're right. More than, than I can ever remember in a budget cycle, there are so many unknowns. So, you know, we, we, we want to, you know, we want to hope for the best but prepare for the worst, and that's what we'll do. I think the good news, if there is any good news in the scenario, is that at least initially, we didn't get hurt as bad on the state aid side as we thought we might. The bad, you know, there's a good news, bad news scenario all around. The bad news is there may be state aid cuts during the year, so we have to position ourselves for that as a possibility. The good news is that, right now, we're only about four thousand dollars above the tax levy cap, which I think is something that any other year, we'd be, we'd be popping the champagne corks and, and having a big party. But given all the other stuff out there that is a question mark, we're not celebrating. You know, we're close, we can likely get below the tax levy cap without, right now, without too much effort, but all the other variables could make that tighter, and it may make us have to decide, you know what? A lot of things that we, we wanted to do and we could have done had we not been dealing with this, with this pandemic, maybe we got to push it out for another year or however long. I mean, nobody knows how long this is going to be an issue for, for all school districts. It's not just the Rhinebeck issue, it's, it's an everybody issue. So we've, you know, we're, we're not, we're not kicking the can down the road, we have some time. We know that the budget vote's not going to happen on May eighteenth, or whatever the date was. The governor's already said, "No vote will happen prior to June first." So we know that, that puts at least another couple, three weeks onto the budget process. And like everybody else, we got to play it one day at a time, one week at a time. Nobody else knows this information, we don't know it. We'll, we'll manage it, and we're in, we're in the process of managing it as best we can with more uncertainties than we typically have in a budget development cycle. So I, I don't disagree with you, Diane, and this, this budget may look a lot different, at least in terms of what we had hoped to do, that we're not going to be able to do, than, than we're hoping it might be able to, to, to happen at, at this point. But we're, we're taking it day by day, week by week, and we're on it. One, one additional area in which I forgot to mention that you, you could, and that was to add more appropriated fund balance to the revenue side. So that's, that's always a possibility too, if you wanted to add in fifty or a hundred thousand dollars. Remember, we reduced our appropriate fund balance from eight fifty to seven fifty this year. We, we could go back to eight fifty, and that puts an extra hundred thousand dollars, you know, on, on to the expenditure side that could be added. So that's still a possibility also you could, you could consider. And the caveat there, of course, those of you who've been on the board for more than, than, you know, a, a couple of years, know that when you, when you use more of your fund balance towards reducing the tax levy, then when you get into a situation where you have five hundred thousand dollars worth of unanticipated instructional expenses come at you over the summer, after you've already gotten your budget approved and passed, that eats your fund balance up pretty darn quickly. So we, we've been, as, again, those of you who've been on the board for any amount of time, know that we've been trying to gradually wean ourselves off, off the need for fund balance to reduce the tax levy, and to build our fund balance gradually, prudently. You all know that for a number of years, we were on the comptroller's list of districts in, in fiscal stress. And just, darn it, just when we got off that list.
Stay off of it.
Yeah, we're trying to stay off.
We're going to stay off of it.
Again, we, I, I'd not, I'd not sit here and, and ever say never, but I would, you know, I'd caution the board to be very careful about reversing that trend. The other thing I want to mention too is we're, we're looking at, as most of the board members are aware from the, the email avalanche today, I figured I'd share the love and send the avalanche back your way. We are going to be meeting as a finance committee, I think it's this Thursday, if I'm not mistaken, although I'll have to.
It is.
So the finance committee is going to, going to meet, and we'll be discussing a number of these issues as well. So we'll, we'll be able to get a little more granular with the help of the finance committee than, than we've able, been able to do at this point right now. So that input will be, will be very helpful.
Any other questions? Before we move on to the next part of agenda, I just wanted to thank all the administrators for being here and giving us all this information tonight. We appreciate your time, we appreciate all the work that you've been doing through all of this, and your staff as well, but thank you for being here tonight, we appreciate that.
Echo that, Diane, you know, when, when you're in a crisis, that's when you really, you really realize the strengths of your organization, and, you know, we've talked about the, our teaching staff and the, the fact that they've gone above and beyond to provide instruction in a, in just a really, really weird situation. And I would have to say the same in, in commending our administrative staff to, to have just sucked it up and, and done what had to be done with a smile on their face and a good sense of humor. And you've got a great administrative team here. Don't, I, I would caution the board never to, to take that for granted either, because they're a great group of administrators, and it's, it's been a pleasure working with them over the years, and it sounds weird to say it's been a pleasure working with them through this crisis, but crisis aside, I have to say that they've been a great group, so hang on, Tom.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to good news.
Next item.
Good news?
No, I was going to say, next item. There is, there isn't a heck of a lot of good news, other than what you've heard tonight, which is teachers are teaching, kids are learning, administrators are, are administering, we didn't fall apart.
We're healthy.
And I, and I would say, again, you know, you can always do more and different, but in my conversations with my colleagues around the county and in the region, compared to, some of them anyway, and I'll just leave it that way, we're doing pretty darn well. some of them anyway, and I'll just leave it that way, we're doing pretty darn well. And I just got to say that because we talk as a, as a larger group of administrators quite frequently, and a question came up last, at our last meeting three weeks ago, about, you know, are we reaching out to our other administrators to find out what best practice is and find out how we're all trying to solve this problem? And may not seem like it to the casual observer or to the, to the, to the social media mavens out there, but we're, we're ahead of many school districts in doing what we're doing. So I'll just say it that way and leave it, leave it at that. But, so there's some good news, I think.
Yeah, I think how, how Rhinebeck is dealing with this is good news. How, you know, our teachers are responding, our staff, you know, everything that they're trying. I mean, I think that is good news. You know, I think that our kids will remember at the end of this that they were supported and cared about.
Yeah, and as the vast, as our administrators have shared with us, the vast number of parents have been appreciative and supportive. And I'll just, I'll leave that there as well.
Anyone else have any good news?
It's nice to see the field work at CLS starting. I see the trucks there this morning. One nice big pile of dirt that me and my dog can climb on.
We know when Sheldon, Sheldon asked me about, you know, should we have, should we have these guys here doing this work? I said, well, I said, are these going to be in a tractor or a bobcat or a bucket loader? Yeah. I said, well, it doesn't get much more socially distant than that, so have at it. You know, go forward. We talked to Steve to make sure that if we got, if we were to be back in session by early May, would we still be able to? I mean, this, this sounds really weird for me to even suggest this, but we've discussed this too. You know, would there even be the possibility of having a truncated spring sports season? You know, when you start chewing up your fields, that, that can be an issue. And Steve was great too, you know. You know, the communication back from him is, yeah, well, you know, we'll, we'll make do with, with yous in Stone Church, and, you know, we'll make it happen. We'll make it happen. We knew there was going to be some inconvenience at some point during this construction cycle. Anyway, we are, we try to minimize it as much as possible, but yeah, we can make it work if we're, if we're back. So there was no reason not to turn those guys loose and say, get as much work done as you can get done, because that's less of a disruption a couple of growing seasons down the road. So I think that's, that's a positive on the construction side. Tom's already talked about the negatives, and it's way too depressing for me to bring up again, so.
Or business?
I have none.
Another opportunity for public comment. I don't see anyone raising a hand or doing anything.
See anything?
I don't see anybody. Okay. Other?
I have, I don't have any others.
Other, the only thing I would say goes there, I think, not that anyone has a lot of free time, but maybe we could make some more use of our Twitter account by some of the good things that are, that are going on in our school. Maybe we could highlight them more for everybody to see. I know, you know, I've been able to see some different things, but all parents don't get to see what's going on. So just say, maybe if it's possible to throw some more things on Twitter that are going on, that would be nice for people to see.
Yep. Well, I, I have an itchy Twitter finger here lately, so as soon as our building principals send stuff my way, they know that, that I'm pretty, I'm pretty diligent about getting stuff posted. I mean, we just put up some stuff today about the Spirit Week, and I would, I would just encourage my colleagues, keep them coming. Doesn't, doesn't cost anything but a few mouse clicks to get that stuff out there. So they have to tell me, and then up it goes.
It makes people feel good even if it's not their building or your...
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, I'd like, I'd like some information. Ed, I'm sure you're probably already on it, but you mentioned tonight about some kind of Earth Day activity next week. So that hasn't crossed my desk yet, so send them my way. It'll be up there. I got some good stuff happening. Send them my way. We're not, you know, we're not sitting around moping just because the world is, is on fire. Send the stuff our way, and we'll be glad to push it out to our communities.
And can I add to that? Can I add to that as well? Remember, please, Rhinebeck Reality, World Wide Web, rhinebeckreality.org, also has a phone app. That's going to be the, the central communications location for high school activities. We're going to be partnering with John's permission with BMS Kids, so dial it in, load it onto your phone, and stay up to date. Thank you.
All right, I thought of another, another, actually, it's more good news than other. If you haven't seen it yet, you should check it out on Rhinebeck Reality. There was a great article written on April 1st about, about my new position as the full-time Rhinebeck Hawk mascot. So I, I feel honored to have been bestowed that job and that title, even though it sounds a lot like what I'm doing now, including making cancellations and delays, supervising the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school programs. I think the catch is that I, I need to wear the Hawk, Hawk outfit, and I, they'd probably have to get it taken out a little bit. But thank you for, for bestowing that new title and position on me. I really, I really do appreciate it. Thank you so much. I was laughing. You guys are supposed to laugh now.
I was laughing. You'd be great, Ed, Joe. You'd be great.
I bet I would. I had big, I had big, big chicken feet, Hawk feet to fill.
All right, we're going to move on to our action items. Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following consent items.
To move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes? Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the following resolution. Whereas negotiators for the district and Rhinebeck Teachers Association executed a supplemental memorandum of agreement on April 8, 2020, addressing issues related to the school closure resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic, and including contract terms for a one-year rollover successor, collectively negotiated agreement to the parties agreement that will expire on June 30, 2020. And whereas legislative approval is required by the Board of Education in order to implement the funding of said agreement, now therefore be it resolved, pursuant to the ratification by the Rhinebeck Teachers Association, the board hereby ratifies the supplemental memorandum of agreement between the district and the Rhinebeck Teachers Association dated April 8, 2020, and authorizes the funding of those monies necessary to implement the provisions of the 2020, 2021 collectively negotiated agreement between the district and Rhinebeck Teachers Association. Copy of said supplemental memorandum of agreement shall be incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting.
So move?
Second.
Any discussion? Just thank you, Joe, for your work on this. Appreciate getting with them.
I was just going to say, I appreciate, I appreciate the work with, with our partners in the Rhinebeck Teachers Association to make this happen. I think it's a good thing for everybody. So hopefully, the board will approve this tonight.
All those in favor? Six in favor, opposed, abstained. Let's want to abstain, extension place. Okay, Joe, I have no executive session. You?
Diane? Can we go back to the action items, please? Thank the Rhinebeck Science Foundation for their donations for Project Lead the Way. Tamisha to the district for, for position. Congratulations.
Yes, Tamisha, you've been a great find. Really been great, Tamisha. I appreciate your work.
A great find?
Yes. I was worried. I was worried about finding somebody, and we, we lucked out, and Tamisha's been a great addition to the business office. I couldn't be happier with her in our office. Way to go, Tamisha.
Way to go, Tamisha.
You go. Congratulations. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
To move?
Second.
All those in favor?
I have six. We're all good.
In favor. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
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 Night.